I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Go on, please, yes.
Councilman Scruggs.
President.
Councilman Livingston. Councilman Livingston.
Here.
Councilwoman Crohn. Councilman Taylor.
President.
Councilman Papistrat.
President.
Councilman Motzle.
President.
President Scanlon.
President.
All seven here.
Alright. Not till approval minutes, Councilman Scruggs, you please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask for unanimous approval for the business meeting minutes from July 17, 2019.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
On the public comment, you have five minutes to speak. Can you be respectful and state your name and address of where you're from, please? Someone's gotta be first.
Hi, my name is Kathy Young and I live in the York Valley here. I'm the former superintendent of the--
Motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, okay. Rules suspended, go ahead.
Being to judge the-- I'm here tonight to address a couple of concerns as well as misunderstandings and mischaracterizations that have been stated in the past. However, the first item I'd like to address is the work session that occurred on Monday just two days ago in which a rank and file union employee brought up concerns that he had observed in the course of his work. Council's reaction to him was disappointing and I was saddened to see the reaction. The city has paid well over $12 million to Jacobs Engineering, Jerry Neistrom who was the construction manager, for oversight of the project. They do oversight, they do inspection, and I was really disappointed to see you find fault with an employee for bringing something to your attention that Jacobs had missed or overlooked. I would like to say that at least while I was superintendent there, we did have weekly meetings with plant staff and then we also had weekly meetings with Jacobs Engineering in which most of the items that were observed throughout the course of the week or month or whatever were brought up to them. And in the owners' meeting, which is usually on Wednesdays, where they had said that supervisors attend, they're discussing at that length at that time. There's no minutes in those meetings because they're considered informal, but many of those items are brought up and addressed. Mr. Papistrat asked how the board interacts with construction management company. The board has no oversight or role in the construction project as it is solely the responsibility of the city as the lead agency. The board's role is to operate and manage the plant and personnel and try to ensure that it needs permitting. That's their responsibility. It doesn't have responsibility for construction oversight at all. With regard to the issues and concerns being brought up, I'd like to note that City Council should be receiving Binghamton-Johnson City Joint Sewer Board minutes and many of those items are also addressed in the superintendent's report and discussed at length in the course of those meetings. I believe that the minutes are usually sent to council and also posted online. In another matter, I wanted to briefly mention a statement that Bruce Toby had made that he had met with me over the course of many hours. That's incorrect. I met with him once for a couple of hours and possibly, I don't have it in my notes, but I may have met with him very briefly a second time when he was coming back to the plant for a tour. So he mischaracterized those meetings. In the course of those meetings, I did recommend a change in how the plant should be managed, but it was mostly a suggestion that it become a community-wide owned facility rather than owned by the city and the village. I think that it is too much for the city to be a lead agent in a project this magnitude and I think it's too much for the city and village to handle on their own. It's a community asset and I believe firmly that all users in the area should be a part of that management process. As for trying to determine agendas or reasons why there might be acrimony or concern with this construction project as it's moving forward, I'd like to remind the council of the plant's previous experience--
Excuse me, you have one minute.
Thank you. Plant personnel at that time repeatedly brought issues to the owners and they were rebuffed until something very serious occurred. Litigation is still ongoing regarding that issue that happened in 2008 through 2011. The experts that the city hired for that lawsuit stated that they, and these experts were from Cornell and from Virginia Tech, stated that plant, they were amazed at the job that plant personnel did in operating that facility in the condition that it was in. Yet now, you're considering privatization with, I feel is an insult to the plant employees that were working there at this time. You can't have both ways. We were either great or we're not. In closing, I just want to say that I personally would like what is best for the area, even though I live in York Valley. What happens here impacts the entire region. It impacts industries, real life, all the industries that employ people--
Excuse me, your time is up. Thank you for speaking. Next speaker, please. Before you speak, I forgot to mention, start of the meeting, we're down here because the city hall council chambers sustained some damage about three weeks ago with rain, so that's why we're down here in support of our work.
There's the other ones. There's eight here.
Yes.
Mr. President, I just want to state on the record that I did mention by email before the meeting that there might be a larger crowd than this room could accommodate. I just feel like it's, you know, it's important for us to make room for everybody who shows up to these meetings and taking up their time and they deserve a place to sit. They shouldn't have to sit on the floor or stand and they shouldn't have to struggle to participate in the meetings.
I would agree with that. We don't really have anywhere else to go in City Hall unfortunately, so that's where we are right now. Good evening, please.
My name is Brian Swan. I am an employee of the Binghamton J.C. Sewer Plant. I've been there for almost 11 years. I wanted to address some of the topics that were discussed at the City Council work session a couple of days ago.
Mr. Sam, can you state your case residence?
Oh, five McNamara Ave on the south side of the-- Over the last few years, a very significant amount of money was spent through trial and error to get digester number three to stop leaking. It was seal-coated and had a new top installed a few years ago and it's still leaked. The new top had to be removed and basically thrown away due to the pins holding the bladder support straps were pulling out of the upper wall. It was then re-sealed a year ago or so and seems to be holding well. Jerry Neistrom says that the coating applied to the walls of the digester is for concrete preservation and not necessarily a leak seal. I guess since number three is not leaking, we are lucky, the concrete preservative is taking care of the leaking problem. Digestors one and two, especially one, has had groundwater leaking into the cone for a long time. When they first started working on digestors one and two, the groundwater level was up past the top of the cone. We threw in a sump pump and pumped them down and of course they would slowly start to fill back up. So it was a known fact that they both took in significant amounts of groundwater. They put black sealant or concrete protector on the sides but not past the top of the cone, unlike digester number three which was sealed all the way to the bottom. We have pictures of water seeping into both one and two digestors. I gave you one example, I've got a lot more. With the inner and outer bladders over the top of the tanks. Why would we not want to seal or protect those tanks as well? Are they not concrete? Do they not leak? We are concerned that there are no leak test plan for these two digestors before sludge is added. Should it be assumed that there will be no seepage into the ground as was the issue that plagued digester number three? Is this being rushed through due to a fear of extra fines? Jerry Neistrom says that's how it was engineered and they were just following what was on the prints. When it was mentioned that, should mistakes and oversights be corrected for future good of the plant? Jerry spoke right up and said he agreed with that. Well, which is it? You can't have it both ways. If it's so obvious that the cones are leaking, number one digester would fill up halfway with groundwater, yet that was only half sealed. Was that for the good of the plant or were you just sticking to the engineer's plan even though there is an obvious issue there? If Jacobs inspectors walked into digester building and took a look a little earlier on, they would have or should have noticed a huge amount of groundwater in both the digester tanks. Why the heck was something so obvious half sealed? Digestor three took a lot of trial and error and a huge amount of money to get it sealed properly from top to bottom. Why rush the job on one and two? It's not making any sense to us. When Adam told the Jacobs employee about the leak in the sludge line, he did exactly the right thing. It was acknowledged by the Jacobs employee and what more was Adam to do? The next day, he might be in a completely different part of the plant doing a completely different task. Should he be the one to go back to the digester to check on something that he already reported to a Jacobs employee? It's my understanding that these weekly meetings that are attended by Jacobs plant supervision and staff are mostly contract meetings, not punch list meetings. I was once told that once when an issue was brought up by plant personnel to Jerry at a weekly meeting, they were told that it was not the time to bring it up. This contradicts the arms wide open mantra that Jerry keeps talking about. Do you think this employee will be forthcoming with issues in the future after being practically ignored by Jerry? Was, uh, when is the right time? Remember, we are hypersensitive when it comes to the construction and installation of equipment at this plant. We had a catastrophic event due to shoddy workmanship in the BAF secondary treatment portion a few years ago.
Excuse me, you have one minute, sir.
Okay. Before the wall fell, we were dealing with a lot of poor design within that process. The blowers are failing on many different levels. We spent a lot of time developing a way to best deal with their design shortcomings. I bet most of the population doesn't realize that a major snail problem nearly destroyed the DN process of the plant long before the wall fell. Also, the filtering media from the BAF secondary was escaping during the backwash process, circulating then slowly destroying the primary portion of the plant. Those are just some of the issues that had the potential to cost rate payers a very large amount of money. However, we were able to adapt and overcome these issues. Please excuse us if we seem over diligent, but we have good reason. I'm sure everyone would agree that we do not want to see history repeated, so thank you. Those pictures are taken, they were taken today and it just shows one of the digestors that has the lid on it. We had a spotlight in there, we took pictures of it. The other one is nearly the same. We have more pictures, but I didn't have enough.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm looking at the timer. Okay, 'cause I gotta get back to see 90210, you know? That's the revenge, you know? You're old, you start watching something and then they come back and they're older. So it gives me a great deal of pleasure to see that. This is, well, we haven't got a city council chambers and the sewer plant isn't much better, so what are we gonna do? You people gotta start voting no on a lot of this stuff. You can't, you can't think that you're gonna make a great vote at the end because you're being led to that. You know, it's like the Christians going to the lions in the Colosseum. Those that went led exemplary lives. It wasn't a big deal by the time they got to the Colosseum. So you're headed, you're on your way to the Colosseum, so we better start walking the walk. You better start showing if you support the people or you don't and you better start voting no, no, no. Just say no. Now, look, my philosophy of government is simple. The public owns the enterprise. When we talk about city this, city that, city administration, they don't own it. We own it. The people own it. And you have to do what the people say they're doing. I remember the level of trust here is all with the public, is all on board with the people that are running the plant. 100 percent, 100 percent. I haven't seen one person come to these meetings and say, you know, I'm totally behind Jacobs, they're doing a great job. These people paid for their sewer plant, they're gonna pay for their sewer plant, they want their sewer plant. It's that simple. No hot shot from Gloucester is gonna come down here and tell them off. And the level of contempt that these people showed for the city residents, like we're a bunch of rubes and pumpkins and only Rich David can possibly understand it, is beyond reprehensible. You know, who do you think you're dealing with? These people live on the south side, the north side, the east side, the west side. They've got degrees, they've got experience, you know, you're not putting one over on them. So let's let the votes reflect the public's displeasure. And where is Donna Lepardo and Fred Akshar? We're gonna need help. Get ahold of Carly at Cuomo's office. Say we're heading to bankruptcy. Johnson City is definitely heading to bankruptcy. I mean, if you follow this in real time, they've got, they've got cash payments to make up when these assessment challenges come in. It's gonna be akin to when Anatech left. They've got 14,000 residents and 40 percent of the action here. So if they go, you're going. So you better, you better treat this like something serious. It's way out of hand, everybody knows it. We've gotta try to reclaim it around sanity and reason and you might as well go on the record now and say, I'm against privatization. None of these blue ribbon panels, none of this thing that Chris is suddenly gonna come to some conclusion that we're getting a good deal, the public doesn't understand it. Public understands this thing. It's a ripoff. This Long Island one that was in the news the other day, 77 million or something? I mean, I, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, what's going on? What's going on? We have to support the workers, we have to rope in Jacobs, we have to 100 percent withdraw this outlandish privatization that was custom crafted as if the attorney was a lobbyist. That we paid 140 grand of legal services for this guy to tell us, we don't know what we're talking about, the workers don't know what they're talking about, we've gotta go in this direction. This is the most monumental decision in this city's history. It's akin to being on the Harrisburg City Council when the incinerator was in play and you just gotta say, look, the people want it, we're going back and we're doing it 100 percent like the people and that's it. Withdraw this proposal, fire, fire, fire. You're fired, as in you're fired. Fire the attorneys, rope it all in, ring fence it in, get Akshar, you know, Akshar and Lepardo, they're very, they're hot shots.
You still have one minute.
They're hot shots, they know, they know a lot, they talk about their connections and all their work. Where are they? Where are they? Get ahold of Cuomo and say, look, we're going down the tubes. We're going down the tubes big time here. But until then, until then, it's our sewer plant, we're paying for it, we run it. Can we be any clearer than that? Thank you.
My name's Gary Edwards, 13 Clarindon Drive. I work the sewer treatment plant also. Um, just tell you what these papers are. The first one is out of a book that we have to study how to get our state certification for wastewater. It's page six, I'd say a book of about 600 pages, if I'm more. I highlighted a statement in there and of course I keep it posted for myself. But it basically says that as operators, you should be involved in the planning of upgrades or basically anything that goes on in your wastewater treatment plant because we are out there 24/7, 365. We don't sit in our office and stare at the wall. We are the ones out there moving stuff up, down, all over. We see things failing, we see things getting better. We were not involved in one stitch of this construction. So on that note, I would like to ask everyone on City Council to step in our shoes for one minute. If you had to work side by side with a person or company that was there to take your career, your pension, your plant, all your efforts that you put in over the length of your service, do you think that would make for a conducive or communicative work environment? We have to work with Jacobs, which we do. As Adam stated, we do talk to them. We don't see them an awful lot. They supposedly walk around continuously to four inspectors. I only know two of them somehow, but, um... I think the problem with communication is that the majority of this body that approved the funds privatized the Binghamton-Johnson City wastewater treatment without even knowing what was being approved really, really says a lot of what you guys think of lessons of employees. They never once came to us, asked us questions.
Excuse me, but it is not approved.
Yeah.
You're totally wrong on that. Privatization is not approved.
The funds for the RFP, RFQ, whatever--
It's a study.
It was just for a study, but there's bids.
There is no study, it's a moral, it was a moral--
Excuse me, I'll stop and speak, let's finish.
Yeah, I mean, doesn't he have a lot of time?
It's fine, we'll give him his time.
Yeah, his time should be given.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, on 6/5/2019, Danny Crohn stood up and addressed us with her turn at the Communication from Council. She said, "We developed the RFQ for management." She didn't know it was for the workers. If I knew it was for the workers, I would not have signed or cited, I couldn't understand what she said with it. She also said she didn't know about the RFP until we did. So we're talking June, almost two months ago, people on this council didn't know about the RFP. Who did? Who was in on it? Who made this decision? If the funds were for an RFQ just to see if it was worth doing, why did we, where did that money go? Why did we throw away $140,000 on a verbal RFQ that nobody can even see, hear, nothing? At a few meetings, there's also been questions about time and money that has caused Jacobs to track down our Facebook posts. Isn't that their job, to find the problems? Why didn't any of their four inspectors that blocked the job site on a continuous basis, supposedly, stop and ask us where the problems were? It's not like they didn't know who posted on Facebook, our names are all over it. How much are you guys paying Jacobs? Is that not enough money to do their job? If we're finding the obvious problems, should Jacobs pay us or maybe they need more people or a second pair of eyes?
Let's, you have one minute.
Who makes sure all these not so obvious problems are caught? Who signs off on these things? That's my question because somebody signed off on that wall that fell in 2011. And there was inspectors, there was, everybody was there too and nobody saw that. The picture that I gave you guys is a ladder and you can see the railing, it's about a railing standard, about three feet, under some ventilation ducting. Who can climb, who's gonna climb under that ventilation ducting to use that ladder? If they would've moved that over three feet, six feet, eight feet, it would've been wide open, nothing there. There's a ceiling 15 feet from that ventilation system. So now somebody's gonna have to fix that, whether it be us, the construction people, I don't know. That's just the obvious thing that I see.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Burns. I live on the south side, 47 Bidwood Drive. And I'm here tonight not as a opponent of anybody. I know that we, all of us here, share one thing and that is, we'd love the city of you or we wouldn't be. Anyway, I've been listening and studying the privatization situation and I looked up there are cities across the country that have done it. But one of them is about 30 miles from here and that's the city of Cortland. So I called the city hall up there and because it was so long ago, the person didn't really, really know much about it. And they put me in touch with Bruce Adams, who is the superintendent of their sewer treatment plant. And I asked him about the fact, now, they had gone to a private company and now they have taken it back from the private company. And the reasons that they took it back is quite interesting and I think that, that you all, I hope, take a good look at this and call him and call us from City Council up in Cortland. But they had an accident in 19, it was 1992, chlorine went into the water. So they needed to rebuild their plant. While they were rebuilding it, their chief operator died and there was nobody on the staff that could take the operator's place, there was nobody qualified. So they put out a search, sort of a nationwide search, for a chief operator. While they're doing the search, they meet a company or different companies and they become convinced that privatization is the way to go for them. They go private. The company that is now running their largest asset of their city sells that company. So a conglomerate buys the company, the management company. Their CEO is in London. So the city of Cortland now is answering to somebody from another country. They then sell it. They sell it, it becomes ST Environmental, no, that was the British operation. It becomes Cunningham Environmental and they changed their name to Ogden Water. While they are in charge of the water plant, they go Chapter 13. And now, the employees, they did keep all the employees, by the way. They gave, all the employees were guaranteed a job with the private company, guaranteed and guaranteed that their wages would stay the same and all their health benefits would stay the same. At any rate, they go Chapter 13 and now they're fighting to make sure that the Chapter 13 company isn't gonna cut corners trying to save money and they're sold again. So finally, the city, the contracts run out on them and they take it back, I guess they took it back around eight, nine years ago, something like that. And Mr. Adams, his suggestion to the city of Binghamton is to keep it under control, do not lose control. I'm sure this man that's been coming into your work sessions, I've seen the videos, he seems very knowledgeable, he seems like a very nice guy, but if they sell that company, Mr. Nice Guy is not gonna be here anymore. The mayor won't be here, most of you won't be here. And the city of Binghamton will be, will not be in control of their largest, most important asset.
Mr. Bird, you have one minute, please?
Okay. And that's about all I have to say. I hope you call Cortland. Thank you.
I'm Susan Ryan, I'm here at 20th Avenue in New York City. I'm also the county legislator for District 11 of Binghamton and Johnson City. I've been trying to stay away from this issue with the Ted football as most of us would like to, but clearly, time has come for me to address it. So I wrote a letter, I'll try to paraphrase it and I will submit it to them. After nearly half a century of improved water quality, the river is now degraded due to the effluent from the plant. I don't know if you remember what it was like back in the 70s, I sure do as a kid. And then I love that we were able to use it again by the late 70s and 80s. As a reminder, a Class A river is designated for drinking water supply, fishing and recreation. As public servants, all of us, we're obligated to protect this valuable and irreplaceable resource placed in our trust. For these reasons, I'm asking you to consider the following. The plant failures are not due to its workers. The problems associated with the plant date back decades from mismanagement and lack of capital investment along with the impacts of the historic floods. Although the plant's history is long and complex, it's important to note that the problems stem from poor oversight and construction failures. stem from poor oversight and construction failures, not the daily operations of the good public employees who work there. In fact, I've never heard of any negative issues regarding the workers, yet I have heard of their dedication and concern for the plant, about the plant, and for the plant, and for the community. Until we have clear proof that a private contractor will reduce costs and improve operations, I urge you to allow the plant owners to keep their jobs as dedicated public servants. Number two, a premature push toward privatization may lead to lack of accountability and transparency. Until the plant is fully operational, it is imperative that we are able to determine the success or failure of the new construction. Any failures to the plant due to construction could be hidden or modified to appear that the failures were new and are not associated with the contractors hired to do the upgrades. In other words, would you turn your home or your business over to a new contractor when you were in the middle of a major renovation? I certainly would not, and I don't think you would either. That would not make sense, nor would this. Number three, a major decision affecting a public facility requires a full understanding of the costs, benefits, and potential impacts to the community. The residents of Johnson City, Binghamton, and the eight other towns who rely on the plant deserve to understand the issues and have their concerns heard. The businesses and industries that rely on the plant need to understand the costs and benefits. As we know, there was a consultant hired to perform a study for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, which resulted in an oral report to the city council. To date, the results of this publicly funded study have not been made public. We need to explore the options, assess the impacts, mitigate any threats to the river, and ensure that the decision to privatize is in the best interest of the entire community. So, in the spirit of meeting our obligation to the public that we serve, I suggest a path forward. The State Environmental Quality Review Act is designed to facilitate an open deliberative process to lead local governments to the best decision for our area. Under secret, it's not the state that drives the process, it is the local decision-makers. It's all of you. Through this process, we would be able to establish the lead agency, involved agencies, interested parties, and have a clear timeline for evaluation. We can evaluate alternatives, analyze costs, minimize risks to our community and the environment.
Mr. Ryan, you have one minute.
Perfect. Key stakeholders and the public could have input, review the analysis, and the entire process could be done in a matter of months. The process would allow for open and transparent evaluation and lead to a clear and sound decision for this critical public service. And again, I believe in good government, smart government, and good public-private partnerships. We just want to understand what we're heading into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody's even sitting in their chair.
Yeah.
Just sitting over there.
I would want to.
I'm Mark Waylon, Eighth Haven Street, the county legislator, like Suzy. I have property to think that I didn't start out to be a landlord, it's just the people in my neighborhood passed away, and their families didn't want to own two families. I ended up buying them, just more or less to keep the homeowners out. The, this project has a huge impact, not just, not just on me, but every family in this area, not just in Johnson City, but spread out, you know, in the area itself. And it impacts our ability to attract businesses in the future. It truly is a big, big project. At the county level, when we were faced with big, big projects like the incinerator, we had, we worked to share the information as widely as possible. We had committees at the hall, we had forums, discussions. I remember going to a Harper Forum thing, and Jack Guinan and I argued back and forth on it. I haven't taken a position on this. I don't know enough to take a position, and that's part of the problem. I mean, I consider myself a guy that's pretty active in the community, and I care a great deal about efficiency in government. There's just, you know, with the state of the news media these days, and the local paper, there's just not a lot of information out there on this whole process. So I would suggest, you know, have a meeting that's focused just on sewage treatment plant, and what's going on, so that we can call in, gather the information, have people that are both, you know, the experts, the acronyms of the world, and your engineering firm, but have staff from the sewage treatment plant there, so they can bring forward their We, we looked through privatize, a few years, about five years ago, the food service delivery for the jail, the nursing home. I was opposed to it. I wasn't, after all the research I did on air market, I wasn't too thrilled with the performance. As it turned out, after about two and a half years, they just said, you know, "We can't make any money there with the..." So I do have concerns about privatization. I also know that if, I'm absolutely boggled by the fact that the staff or the board has no input on the construction project, because I know my thirty-eight year with, years with the fire department, you know, if we were going to build a fire station, which we haven't, we've cut drastically in the forty years that I was there, but if we were going to build a station, we'd be intimately involved, and indeed, any piece of equipment we've bought, we were involved with purchasing and legal, and so. You're getting expertise from people who are knowledgeable. So, listen, I know all of you, you've got a tough job ahead, but I would just encourage you to share, be more open about sharing the information. I'm not saying you're hiding information, I'm just saying that, that for a lot of us, just running our lives and running our household, getting the car fixed, and getting kids to school, and all that, takes up so much of our time that it's hard to get little bits and pieces about the sewage treatment plant. Maybe just a forum, a committee at the hall, or something like that would be useful in transmitting information out to people you represent. Thank you.
Hi. I want to ask you all a favor first, is that whenever I resume my role as an engaged citizen, I get accused by the mayor being political. And I think that's an insult. So I'm asking all of you, go void that. I'm a ratepayer, I'm a citizen. Before I got involved in city service and ran an election, I was very engaged, and I will do so afterwards. The last I checked, poop is not a partisan issue. You don't poop red, you don't poop blue. All right? Everyone here flushes multiple times a day. This is an issue forever. Levity is now over. Second thing, I would like to say that the privatization scheme has put you all in a very difficult position, and I feel sorry for you, because I think you've all been boxed in, as the mayor has done this multiple times. He has basically kept you in the dark, or he misled certain members, and then throws something on you and says, "Do or die, and it's all on you." I went back and looked at the resolution that the last council approved for a hundred and forty thousand. It doesn't even mention a study. You need to go back and look at those words. It says, "For anticipated legal costs related to the future operations and management of the new plant." And so I asked councilmember, I said, "What are people talking about? A study? Y'all didn't even approve one. I'd really like to know what the administration said when they sold you that resolution." Apparently, that is the only recording that the city clerk's office said is missing. I wanted to hear how they explained to you to allocate a hundred and forty thousand, and that recording is missing. That's creepy. But I feel sorry for you all. The last thing I'll say is that this really is about taking money from pensions, the wages, and putting that on the sheets of a private corporation. That's it. It's fifteen percent off their backs, barlow employees, right into the corporate sheet of some business that might be sold multiple times. And their goal is always going to be to maximize private profit. Their goal is to be optimized public service. I think we have an important philosophical conversation, but I think it's incredibly important now that the ratepayers will be funding for the next couple decades, three hundred to four hundred million dollars in debt service. It's crazy that the number in the media has been reported from two sixty-five to four hundred million. If I came down here as director of planning and housing development and told you my salary might be between fifty and ninety thousand, you all would have freaked. But nobody even knows how much this costs. Nobody even knows how much FEMA still might owe us, how we've asked for. Nobody knows how much litigation we could receive, the worst of the best scenario. Nobody knows this. You guys are wasting your time. Think of how many hours and dollars have been spent on this privatization scheme when it's clear that all of our focus and energy should have been, "I'm working with the plant's staff to make sure that this construction is done correctly." Now we're racing against the clock, literally with a gun to the ratepayer's head. Stop the nonsense. I'd say, don't even wait for the vote. Stand up and say, "Forget this, and put your focus back on the construction, and get this done first before you consider anything else." Thank you.
Everybody else wish you to speak? Let's go forward. Go ahead.
My name is Marty Dury of Fifty-Eighth Clapham in Binghamton. I see, I've been following this debate for several months now, and I see that there's two things that often get conflated, and I think, as the previous speaker suggested, first things need to come first. First of all, you need to get the plant built, operating, get the lawsuits that I'm sure are going to come, get all the effects done, all of that first. And then, then and only then, should you worry about privatization and all the rest of that that comes after, or may not come after. I don't think you've given due diligence to your job as oversight for the city, for its oversight of Jacobs during construction. As members of the council, you ought to be, you see the problems, you ought to be on the, you know, the back of this administration and saying, "Hey, let's go, let's go. Fix this. Get some answers. Fix this. Let's not drag this on." You over-budget, over-time, and it ain't getting better. Then the second thing is, the whole operation. Is that plant going to be operated well or not? Well, first, let's get it built. You know, if it's built with defects, maybe the operation isn't going to go well, no matter who has it, public or private. First things first. And as was suggested by the previous speaker, take privatization off the table, get the plant built, and with respect to privatization, when and if that comes up again, you know, should you decide not to approve that contract or just table it, I would suggest that you take a look at your workers, and then make sure that this isn't a union-busting scheme. These guys, men and women, have been dedicated workers. It's not your place to, you know, privatize their jobs away, privatize their benefits, privatize their futures. They've been good public servants, you need to honor that. But first, get the plant built, get it built right, and get it built without issues. It's costing everybody money, whether you own, whether you rent, whether you just come into town and pay hotel bills. It's all going to go up when those bills go up. And guess what? The economy is going down. It's really simple. First things first. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Gennasio, Ten Make Eleven in Binghamton, New York.
A lot of what has happened here is a symptom of a much larger problem. Lack of transparency, number one, and failure to do due diligence, number two. I mean, if this legal services contract for a hundred and forty thousand was signed off on, the city council should know what they were going to get for that money. And if they were misled, it certainly seems that way, because it wasn't, if what Tarek said is correct, that it was supposed to be for legal services, it was for something else of it, it was not qualified as a legal service. A sales pitch for privatization is not legal service. So, maybe the city should do a refund, or maybe some type of legal action can be taken in that respect. But regardless, as we're going forward with this project, city council, or the next city council, I'm happy to see several of the candidates here tonight, should get about the business of making sure that this never happens again. We need, obviously, laws to ensure that we have more transparency in city government. We also need laws to remind people, or at least define your role, as checks and balances to the mayor, not as a rubber stamp, not as just accepting things and not asking questions and getting things put into writing so that they can be enforced later on. And when you have those, if those laws are already on the book, they're not enforced, and apparently no penalties for them, then that has to be looked at. I know there's a lot of codes, and it's about the size of a Bible, if not larger, but if that type of thing is not included, transparency and accountability, then it needs to be included and maybe underscored a few times. The consultant, it wasn't a consultant. Joe Burns, who spoke earlier, made a few phone calls and found out more than a consultant did. The consultant provided no facts, but as Joe Burns pointed out, he made a phone call and found out that privatization is such a good idea all the time. Other communities had bad experience with it. Why did not this consultant, who did this study, provide the methods that he used, the data that he collected, and he should have made not just a few phone calls, but a lot of phone calls, tabulated the results, and told all of us how his conclusions are based on the facts that he gathered? That didn't happen, and it wasn't in writing. It was an oral sales pitch for privatization at the tune of a hundred and forty to a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. It's disgraced. What I heard happened on Monday, I saw, thanks to Councilman Livingston, and Councilman Livingston was here last year, we would have the recording that was lost from last year, and we don't know why, what sales pitch was made, right? Everything's on tape now, so wear your ties and brush your teeth and so on. That's what we need to do. We need to recheck sales pitches, go on facts, get the research. The city council would have been better off, instead of paying a hundred and forty thousand dollars, which they didn't know what they were paying. dollars, which they didn't know what they were paying for. Put together a task force made of knowledgeable people from the community and maybe a few outside people, and come up with facts and a recommendation.
Yeah, one minute, sir.
One minute, okay. And that wasn't done, so I think the privatization suggestion has to be rejected. From what I heard on Monday, Jerry Neistrom, Bad News, no communication. You cannot manage without communication. He seems to be a big part of the problem, as was revealed a couple of days ago. The consultant and the relationship between the people that are building the plant and the people that want to manage the plant is a big conflict of interest that has to be severed immediately. I hope that at this point, you will go back and do the right thing for the people of this city. As Mr. Whelan pointed out, it has many, many ramifications in terms of the people who are here now and the people who might come here in the future.
Your time is up, sir.
For companies as well. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I live in Cochrane, and I am the facilities engineer at the plant. I've been bringing construction deficiencies and concerns of plant staff to the construction meetings now for two years. And I'm not here to speak about those or the volume or the nature of those deficiencies. I just wanna give the council a little bit of insight into the process. So when a deficiency is spotted or a concern is raised by staff, my first response is to check the drawings for the contract documents. If things are not in specification, I bring them to the next contract meeting so that construction management can direct the contractor to make the necessary corrections. If things appear to be inspect, I typically still bring them to the next contract meeting for clarification by the engineer. There's no timeline for any of this. So sometimes repairs can be accomplished quickly, sometimes they drag on for weeks 'cause the main focus is this critical path of construction and deadline dates, not the rework. So this does lead to a lot of frustration amongst plant staff. They're the ones that are forced to work in these conditions. Construction is not separate from operations. We're working in many of the same buildings that are under construction, so when processes are interrupted, it's plant staff that must perform the work around these interruptions. And they've been very accommodating. Last time I spoke to you, I mentioned the ventilation in the centrifuge room. I told you we have to filter with the doors open and the barn fans blowing. It might create an odor issue. I heard this came up again on Monday, so I just wanted to clarify that. I was told on July thirty-first that ventilation issues had been resolved. I relayed them to the team. When we began filtering the next time, we shut all the doors under the assumption that we would be protected by the HVAC. Five minutes into filtering, personal gas monitors detected elevated levels of H2S, that's hydrogen sulfide. After another five minutes, levels reached fifteen parts per million. But then in context, OSHA sets its industry ceiling limits at twenty parts per million and a construction time weighted limit at ten parts per million. It's not just stinky gas. It's colorless, flammable, poisonous, corrosive, with a toxicity similar to carbon monoxide that prevents cellular respiration. Early detection is the difference between life and death. So it was at fifteen parts per million that staff decided to open all the doors and turn on the barn fans again. After another ten minutes, levels drop below their storage limit. Staff continued to work this entire time 'cause we have limited storage capacity right now. We have to move solids. Our work environment is compromised so that others can complete their work. I just wanna say that. Our work environment is compromised so that others may complete their work. And yet, with the fear of losing their benefits and/or jobs, work is completed. They still show up every day. They find the worker out. Now it seems to me that they're asked to function as inspectors too. This is far outside their job description. And yet, they continue to find deficiencies. So I will continue to ask for clarification and correction. But to be clear, when we ask for correction, we're asking for the city to be made whole. We're asking for ratepayers to get what they're owed. We're not asking for much, just what's in the spec. That's all I have prepared. So again, I wanna introduce you to a little inside lingo and talk about roping, just another one of the beautiful things that we get to deal with at work. Toilet paper and other paper and cotton products go through emaceration, and when they go back through a pump, it has a tendency to weave things back together. So when you weave this material back together, it forms a rope, and it gets caught in humps as they spin. And eventually, they stop. Somebody has to go in there, and they have to pull these ropes out, full of needles and bottle caps and whatever else.
Sir, you got one minute left.
And so I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of insight on what these guys do. I don't wanna get negative, and just let you know, again, what a great, well-trained staff you already have. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Please go forward.
So I moved here in nineteen sixty-nine. I worked at a local company, and then I started my own company here. I left in nineteen eighty-five and came back here in nineteen ninety-four. I've done a lot of economic development, mostly not here in this community, but working to bring companies to the area. One of the things, putting that aside, the thing that really bothers me the most here is that, well, water is a big deal for lots of kinds of companies to wash circuit boards and things like that. So water is, I'm very interested in water issues. What really got to bother me was, is that when the first sewage pigment plant was, I think, and my numbers could be wrong, but it was gonna be for ninety million dollars, and I realized there were floods and things like that, somehow, that whole process crashed. And what has never been in the paper well explained to me is that, and everybody says it, this lawsuit, but I always thought that the guys who constructed that first round, who did such a poor job with very little oversight by both Johnson City and Benhampton engineering departments, I mean, I really don't understand, I'm not blaming anybody, but I understand why that worked. Even basic engineering saw that concrete that are done with butt joints are gonna fail. So I didn't really understand why the guys who built that place aren't responsible, if they had insurance, that they would pay for the failure and that we would benefit from that, of setting up a new whole engineering deal, that now we're at two hundred and thirty-five million dollars and maybe up, and we're over budget and over time. So I recognize that supervision is needed, and I realize that most cities are not really set up with the kind of engineering oversight that you probably need. Whether that should be private or not, I don't really know. But I agree with everybody else, what they've had to say here, is that I think that, and I do see that Jacobs is bidding on the job to private, and is also the contractor. I think I see that as a conflict of interest. They think they should, if they want the privatization, they have to bow out, and somebody else has to bid on it, if that's where you guys are gonna go. But I think actually, you should actually finish the construction. Lots have been said about this. I think you should put that aside, let these guys see if they can actually finish the job one time, federal engineering, get it up and running with the existing staff, see if it runs for a couple of years, see where the problems lie. Most places I've dealt with around the United States and overseas, that's what usually happens with big engineering firms. They get it done, they get it running, and then afterwards, if you feel like, in the water plant in Stockton, California, has an outside outage, they came in and run for water plant. If you wanna privatize in five or six years, you could probably have my blessing, but I don't think you have that at this moment in time. And I think you have to just let these guys see if they can do the job. That's all.
Anyone else wish to speak? Please go forward.
I live at Twenty-Fourth Wall Avenue here in the city of Benhampton. I think I'm here today to really just say, we were here two years ago, and we were, I think it was about two years ago, and we were talking about the need for a project labor agreement. And I come here today to talk about, we should learn from mistakes. And it was truly a big mistake not to do a project labor agreement. If we had done a project labor agreement, we would have had local workers hired out of our local union chat being accountable for being delayed, being all of these things, and the city wouldn't have to fit the bill for this. But instead, we always try to chief out and figure, oh, this is more cost-effective. We'd rather go with, like, the lowest bidder. Well, look what a mess we've gotten in. And we would have been well-served and been much more cost-effective and much more quality-controlled if we had a project labor agreement. So I just say this for the record, that next time you try to do any other project, or if we have to redo this project, that we need to really look at having project labor agreements that holds the contractors accountable and protects us citizens and us ratepayers. And so that was number one big mistake. So let's go down memory lane as well. And then we talk about, we just saw the county rush to privatize our food service. What a mess. We all knew Armoc had a horrible, horrible, horrible record, was kicked out of numerous counties, but instead, we rushed to privatize, and we had a big mess, and it ended up costing us more money. And we also displaced a number of loyal union workers who contribute to our community because they get decent wages, decent benefits, all those things that make our community strong and viable. And we need to look at that. It isn't the race to the bottom to have everyone working for, you know, twelve to fifteen dollars an hour. We need to support our quality workers and the dedicated quality workers that we have here. And to privatize it would be a disaster. And I think we need to really look at this and really learn from our past. But the most outrageous thing in my mind in this whole process, at least we did have input urging you to do project labor agreement, but there has been virtually no public input, no public awareness, no transparency, no nothing. None of us know what's going on, and I would dare say, most of you don't, seeing you already paid someone one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for something you're not sure what you paid them for. I mean, we need to stop, slow down, and like, let's get this plant built, let's really study it, but let's have an open discussion where the community is involved, where we get to have input. And we need to have that level of input, because this is crazy to rush. People are talking about you guys voting on this next month. It's outrageous. There's no hurry. We can continue and have oversight and look at this. And this is what I would beg you to do, to not rush to judgment. Let this plant be built, and let us all have the transparency and know what is going on, and allow us as community members to have input. And I would still, even from the history of privatization that we've seen, it always sounds so good, but what we lose is real accountability. We lose real oversight, and we need to have that for such a valuable asset and something that will cost us all more and more money if we go down this route. And I think we need to stop not privatize, always do a project labor, always do a project labor agreement, and always provide opportunity for yourselves and for the community to be aware of what is really going on and to allow us to have input. And I think that's really, really great. And thank you.
I live at Five Tenth Street in Benhampton. And I am a very concerned ratepayer and also a person who has a little bit of knowledge of some of the background. So I wanna make one correction. The ninety-million-dollar plan didn't just simply crash. A new administration came in and chose to take it in a different direction. So the plans were scrapped. They didn't crash. They were scrapped so we could head in a different direction. The project labor agreement discussion was more like four years ago, and I think it was, in retrospect, a huge mistake. Having been on this board, I know, I served with some of you, and I know that some of you know, I was often very demonized for even uttering the P-word. And I did. Let's study certain things. Maybe private industry can do certain things better. And I was always demonized for that. But here's the thing, and I think that history has shown, when it's been done, it hasn't worked out. But here's the thing, never in a million years would it have occurred to me or to any of the people that I served with previously, and I would hope to none of the people who are supposedly representing the best interests of the folks who live in this city, that somehow rushing headlong into this privatization agreement or any privatization agreement on a two-hundred-and-seventy-five, three-hundred-million, four-hundred-million, whatever it's gonna be, dollar project that's nowhere near complete is illogical and it's careless and it's reckless. And it's the one hundred and forty-four, forty-seven, one hundred and forty thousand, you know, what's a few thousand among friends, that was spent to write this RFP, and that's what it was spent for. Be clear, it wasn't a study. I mean, I really wanna believe that most of you thought you were voting for a study. I wanna believe that, and I'd love to listen to the tape so I could see. But you didn't vote for a study, 'cause never would you pay for a study where somebody sat here and said, "I have some oral notes to give you, but I don't have a methodology. I don't have..." Well, what I do have is an eighty-page RFP that can now be issued for private management. You didn't pay for a study. I think you were misled. I think that's unfortunate. But instead of allowing yourselves to be led down this path more, instead of digging yourselves in deeper, put the brakes on. Somebody put the brakes on and say, "We wanna know what's really going on." This is, you have an obligation to do this. You have an obligation to stop saying yes to everything in the name of getting along. We all wanna get along. Chris and I agree on very little, but we get along just fine. Councilman Matzo and I agree on very little, but we get along just fine. You can disagree, you can perform your oversight function, and you can still get along. I promise. We have to stop. You have to stop. All of you are the only ones who can stop allowing decisions to be made behind closed doors, discouraging any kind of public input, any kind of public notification, and rushing things that shouldn't be rushed. You mark my words. Next month, you're gonna have a contract in front of you to vote on, and it's gonna be worked out by you. You have to vote. Don't let them do that to you again. Don't let them do that to you again. Don't let them. And for the record, the last board minutes updating the construction project are from May, and the last full board minutes on any website that I can find are from January. So it is really hard for the public state of Binghamton. Thank you.
My name is Shawna Cole. I live in the first ward at 1 Ely Park Boulevard. I am a bleeding heart capitalist, and I'm also a well-known libertarian. There'll be something, and what I'm about to say that'll give everyone here something to hate. First of all, when you talk about privatization, what you're not talking about is a really privatization. Because to piggyback off of what Tara said, it's your poop. Therefore, you own your poop, and your poop is your private property. You should dispose of your poop in the manner that you see fit, provided, of course, that you accept responsibility for what you do with your poop. Okay? This right here, this privatization, as you call it, isn't really privatization, because what you're doing is you're granting basically a monopoly to a private corporation. Gee, what could possibly go wrong? But you've also granted yourself a monopoly in the treatment and disposal of sewage. Why can't people decide for themselves? I'm forced to drink poisoned water that I, even though I rent, I have to pay for in my rent. I then pay, again, to have those chemicals removed from my water. You know? Granted, the privatization option is there for me to go to Wegmans and to pay the $0.49 a gallon, to have the reverse osmosis, remove the poisonous fluoride out of the water and the exocrine chlorine. However, in my showerhead, it's not as easy. So if we're going to really talk about privatization, why don't we give people the option by possibly repealing and not enforcing some of the city code that compels them to buy from a state-sanctioned monopoly, and instead allow human ingenuity to answer the call of privatization in the free market? Why couldn't I set up my house with a system to, you know, take care of the sewage problem, and have it confined to my home in a manner that I see fit? Now, you environmentalists that are here, I worked with Green Party, okay, I worked for Elfenator, I helped the Green Party get valid access. I'll tell you one thing, as far as the waste goes, human feces and urine goes, it's a fantastic fertilizer. My mom lives in Twin Orchards, and there are some apple trees that are remaining from the apple orchard farm that used to be there. And with the 2011 flood, we had all of that sewage come and flood the neighborhood in Twin Orchards, that's the area near Walmart, we take a great restaurant. And all of a sudden now, these apple trees, which we have not seen produce in over three decades, are now producing. I tried planting a garden in 2010, and it failed horribly. This year, I plowed a garden in the same spot, and it's producing like crazy. I think here, we're just shooting ourselves in the foot by not allowing private individuals to choose what they do with their poop. I think the answer here is, if we're going to privatize, truly privatize, instead of just granting a monopoly to campaign contributors, to, you know, just stop abusing your office to give your friends their money. That's it, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Please go forward. I'll cancel that part of the meeting then.
I just like this.
Okay.
My name is Dave Hollerin. I live at 35 Madison Street, Binghamton, New York. And for the obvious reasons, I'm a labor representative for the fire department. So I'm against privatization because I've seen the negative consequences of that. But to be honest with you, I really, as a taxpayer, resident of City Binghamton for 54 years, I've come to the last two council meetings to try to understand this issue. And a lot of people bring up a lot of good questions, but I never hear any responses. So I really can't give you my position on this fairly, because I don't have the information that I need to make an educated opinion on. I really think that, and this has been said before, that I think that you need to have some, you know, meetings and discussions, two-way discussions. People ask a question, you give them an answer. A lot of good questions come up, there's been no answers. I really can't speak one way or the other, educated about this, because I'm not getting the information that I need to try to then persuade my councilperson to vote one way or the other on this issue. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hollerin.
President?
Yes?
Based on those comments from Mr. Hollerin, and due to the nature of the public comment session, where you can't really just locate a sort of Q and A, I'd make a motion to move the communications with the council members to this point in the meeting, and not keep it at the end of the meeting, so that council members can actually respond and give their two cents on this important discussion, considering it's such a long agenda today, and most people probably have to leave since they got last word.
That's second. Let's take a voice vote in it, please, Jess.
You want a roll call?
Roll call, please, Jess.
Cosmo Scrangie?
So the motion is to...
The motion is to amend the agenda, to move that part of the agenda to the next one.
To allow the councilmembers to speak right now, so go ahead, Jess.
Cosmo Scrangie?
Aye.
Cosmo Lindeston?
Aye.
Cosmo McCross?
Aye.
Cosmo Taylor?
Aye.
Cosmo Papstra?
Aye.
Cosmo Matso?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
All right, so we'll go to the councilmen's comments, session order left on.
I don't believe we've formally closed public comments this morning.
Okay, good point, yeah. If anyone else wishes to speak, please come forward. I'm going to close the public comments section of the meeting then. Let's start with, Councilwoman Kraus, please.
Mine? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I really liked seeing you out there and being involved. One thing I was thinking of is about the RFPs, because I'm an engineer, and I don't think anybody can understand what anyone's talking about on that. I'd like to see a local firm that represents our community that is a ratepayer look over the RFPs. I think that would be one good step and good thing. Because I don't know if they are, it's so easy to mislead. I think if we have a local firm look over these RFPs as well, that might give some mindset I really don't like that the Jacobs RFP is out there while we're still on site. I don't think that's a smart move for the city, and I think it looks like we're trying to pull a quick one. I can't say they are, but I'm saying it doesn't look right. Look, as I say, we're here for the ratepayers all of us, we all care about the ratepayers. That's why this isn't even a conversation. It's not because we're trying to be bad or jerks, it's just we want to make sure that the ratepayers get it. Their means not as the ratepayers because they don't have to price take on this. So that's why we're here. That's why you're here. And I know you all care because you're all ratepayers as well. Like I said before, I'd be disconcerted. As always, we want to make sure that all of our union employees, all of the employees in Sewer Treatment Center stay there with their benefits that they're paying, and there's no chance of you having it gotten removed. That comes first, because you guys work hard. And you know the difference from me. And I'll keep saying it, okay? I do apologize, because it seems like we don't have a lot of answers, because like I say, none of us are engineers, and a lot of these answers, I know, are something I can't even vouch for at all. And maybe I can have some help with some of the other city councilmen to hold a public forum, because I'd really like to have a public forum on this as well. And that's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you, councilmen. And Councilwoman Taylor?
Hey, Mr. President. I'm going to start by thanking everyone for coming tonight, but also addressing one thing which was said. I think that this body was misled last year at the, in the October or November work session, where a $140,000, a request for legislation for $140,000 was brought to the table to hire legal services. And it was very, very clearly, and I can't speak to this missing reporting or whatever, and I would like to officially inquire about that, but the discussion was for these legal services in the RL, and it was to do a study of management and different options at the sewage treatment plant. It made complete sense, because when you're doing a $275 million reconstruction of a facility, we should probably study how to run it, a new type of facility, different types of ways to doing it. You know, should it, you know, possibly be run by the county or a greater portion of municipalities? Should we get rid of a politically-appointed board? Should it be a public utility? Should it be just in the hands of the city of Binghamton? There are a lot of questions around the style of management when, you know, you're doing such a costly reconstruction. It made total sense. So then I was excited for Bruce Toby, the representative of this firm that we hired, to come to the city council meeting and tell us all about this study that we paid for. And I was very curious, because it had just come out that there was this request for proposals to privatize the management of the sewage treatment plant. So I was very curious as to why, you know, we basically paid for this guy to tell us to privatize the plants away from our workers. So I asked the question, can I see a copy of the study so I can see the numbers behind this, you know, life-changing decision for so many people? And what was I told? That there isn't a copy of the study, and that it was an oral report, and that there's nothing that I can look at as a council member to back up this decision. That was when I decided that this is a scheme for privatization, and that it didn't make any sense at all. There are also some things that need to be addressed from Monday's work session. I don't know how many people were here or were able to watch it. Representative from Jacobs and from a worker from the plant were here to talk about their sort of opinions and their experiences, thank you, surrounding the construction at the sewage treatment plant. There were a lot, there was a lot of he said, she said type of talk, but one thing that really made me nervous was that the plant worker started talking about safety concerns around the surrounding construction. He said, and I quote, that "safety for the plant is not being considered throughout this project. We have complained for months about the hydrogen sulfide levels in the filter room where ventilation has been removed." He said that, you know, "we open the doors to, you know, ventilate the room because our safety monitors go off." He then went on to say that "they have brand-new gas monitoring equipment installed by the contract tractors that are already failing." And the response to this from Jacobs was not to respond to any of these concerns at all, but to act, to in fact say, "Well, they should actually have the doors closed to this building." Which, to me, was dismissive and preposterous, and spoke to what I saw was not just this lack of communication between plant staff and Jacobs, but also a complete dismissiveness of what they were saying about literally their safety, like not breathing in poisonous gases. I mean, it was insane to see. So there's obviously a lack of transparency here. I'd like to officially call for weekly progress reports that come from the mayor's office, that come from Jacobs, and the construction manager, to actually not only inform us about what's going on week by week, but also inform the public of what's going on week by week. Because we have a deadline that is August 31st for Phase 1, I've done multiple tours at this plant very recently, and it does not seem to me like we're going to be meeting that deadline. Lastly, I do not seem to understand, at this point, after months and months of discussion about this, what are the actual benefits of privatizing this plant, or privatizing the management of this plant? There's no evidence that we're going to save any money. You know, so that would be one compelling argument. Obviously, the public is wholeheartedly against this. And at the end of the day, it's almost picking between who do you want to manage our plant? Our people, our workers, the folks that have been doing a good job, or the construction manager who is literally bidding to be the privatization entity in the first place, which has put us 14 months behind on this project? So to me, it all makes no sense. I think it was asked today that council members take a stand and say that they're against this. At this point, I am very happy to. The fact that we are trying to push through this privatization before Phase 1 of this project is even complete doesn't make any sense to me. We don't even know how much it's going to cost to run this thing. And we're asking private organizations to estimate and bill us and come up with some sort of quote? I don't know what the motivations were behind this thing, behind this idea, but I think we should, you know, just take in our egos a little bit and say, this doesn't make sense to discuss right now. Let's put our eggs in the basket of making sure that this construction doesn't get anywhere behind schedule, that we don't start getting fined at $37,000 a day, and move forward the way that we should. Thank you.
Senator Councilwoman Taylor, and the Councilman Matso?
I have no comment.
Okay. And the Councilwoman Papstra?
What Mr. Hollerin said and a few others that spoke, we don't have information to make a solid opinion one way or the other. None of us here have that, because we haven't heard anything from what contractors applied, and which one ultimately is going to be chosen to, that we're all going to meet at some point, to ask all these questions that everyone's asking here tonight about private action. And no one's against, I mean, when you talk about the employees of the sewage plant, not one person has ever said that the employees aren't doing a good job. But multiple people have said, through the years and decades, we've had mismanagement of the plant, whether it be through the board, through the top management positions, and a lot of, and this is a lot of the reasons why the plant would never function. There was always dysfunction. You would hear that before I was on council, since I've been on council, I've been hearing that constantly. So I think this is why I came up to privatize management, to try to bring everything into control, not to get rid of the employees. All the employees will continue to have a job through any one of the contractors that gets hired, or would get hired if that's the way it goes. But to say that we're not going to do anything, we've not heard any of the proposals, then what are we doing? I mean, we want to hear it. I'm sure everyone that wants, all the ratepayers and citizens that pay the, they want to hear what the proposals are, so that we can weigh it out. Do we stay with a, go out and try to hire a project manager to run the plant as a city employee? Do we hire a project manager that works for a company?
Wasn't that in the study you got?
No.
Chris, go. Chris, just speak, please, speak.
Thank you. This is what we're going to find out in the next few months. And everyone can have your opinion about it at that point. But to draw the opinion now without knowing what the other side of the coin is, you can't form a, you can't form an opinion that takes you to affect what benefit it would have to the ratepayer, one way or the other. I'm a president of the city with a business and a home. My rates are definitely going to go up as much as anybody's. I'm as concerned as anyone's. I want the best that we can get for the residents of the city. And in order to accomplish that, we have to hear the whole story. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. How about Councilman Gringy?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask if I could speak at the end after my colleagues and everyone else has spoken.
There's only me left, so you can speak.
Well, I'm sorry, Dan, I'm sorry.
If you're...
Do you mind, Councilman Livingston?
Go ahead.
Councilman Livingston. Well, I think that's, I think it's interesting what Councilman Papastri had just said, because he's literally the only person in this room who actually can see the bid selection committee. So I mean, I would very much like to know more about what's going on in this process. And I actually, I want to start by speaking a little bit to where I'm coming from on this. So when I was running for office last year, I had a ton of my constituents asking me about this sewage treatment facility. It was, there were a lot of general concerns about what's going on in the city, but this was the top specific concern that anybody in my district, it was just, and most people were just saying, "What's going on? What's going on at the sewage treatment plant?" People want more information, they're hungry for it, they value more information. And so, you know, when I took office, you know, what I set out to do was to try and answer some of these questions from my constituents. So I guess the unique perspective that I'm bringing to the table here is that I am actively seeking out information on a regular basis. I attend these sewage board meetings, which, aside from the superintendent's report, are largely mind-bogglingly boring. I mean, I have a hard time understanding everything that's talked about, because there's so much technical detail, as Councilman Cronus talks about, that some of this stuff is close right over my head. And I come from a family of engineers, and I can't understand most of what's going on with the day-to-day operations of that plant. But I haven't stopped looking for accurate and timely information in this whole process. It's been my main concern. And this process is so incredibly secretive, it blows my mind. I mean, we're talking about, well, we haven't heard what the other side has to say. The other side, the proponents of this privatization plan are driving the process. This process, the secrecy, the lack of information, it's not a bug, it's a feature. This is how this process was designed to run. The reason why we don't know anything is because we're not meant to know anything until, I guess, the last minute. I mean, I've encountered this numerous times, with numerous issues since I took office, where business is expedited, it's thrown on our laps days before we're supposed to vote on it. And we're expected to, you know, work with like, what, 20, like, two business days, maybe, to, you know, to talk to people, hopefully they're in the office, and hopefully they've got time for us to just come crashing in on them and ask them a million questions. This process just, I don't know, it just doesn't work. And I, sorry, I have something that I wrote up, and I would like to read through it, but I wanna mention this audio recording that I requested of the meeting in October. It was my interest to hear what the pitch was made, what pitch was made to the city council at that meeting. You know, I've heard some of these audio recordings from past meetings, I've requested, you know, different audio and video recordings from past meetings as businesses come up, because I wanted to familiarize myself with the details, because all my colleagues here have been here for quite a while, and I wanna make sure that I'm informed. And, you know, this was the first time that I had been told that the audio recording doesn't exist, or was lost, or I can't actually remember exactly what was said, because when people started talking about this, you know, I think it was when Councilman Taylor at a business meeting, maybe a month and a half, two months ago, mentioned that we couldn't listen to the audio recording, and I mentioned that I requested and couldn't find it, and then Councilman Skorinji asked me if that was really the case, and I said it was. So I went back into my emails, and I couldn't even find the email. I don't delete my emails, I keep them all there. And then I asked the clerk for a copy of the email this morning, and he said that he couldn't find a copy of it in his inbox. It was an email exchange between him and I, where I basically asked for a copy of the audio recording, he said, you know, that it didn't exist, or was lost, or whatever it was that he said. And then he offered me a copy of the video recording from the business meeting where the vote was taken. So that's the extent of what I know there. I do my best to seek out good information and share it with everybody that I can. I do wanna speak about one other issue. Well, I guess I wanna read through the speech, because, you know, this week, Charlie Piersall, who's the sewage treatment plant business manager, he was formally reprimanded for, quote, "For wasting time during work hours for talking to the press." And I haven't heard anyone claim that when he was talking to the press, he was misleading the public in his comments, or that his comments were in some way outworn. But to me, this really seems like an attempt to intimidate plant staff into keeping quiet. Because if talking to the press was really considered a waste of time, we can only imagine the amount of time that's been wasted by the mayor over the years. This move to silence plant staff, though, for speaking out about what's going on at the plant, it's totally counterproductive. If we've learned nothing over the last few months of hearing from plant staff, we should have at least learned this, that plant staff are paid professionals at the sewage treatment plant. And we ignore, we ignore what they have to say at the detriment of ratepayers and value. When we accommodate a public communications plan that muzzles our employees and channels everything through one or two spokespeople, the public is left to pick through propaganda. After it, the timely information is what's lost in this process. And if you wanna know what the result is, just look at the construction project. Now, I mentioned earlier, it's not a bug, it's a feature. It's a, that's a kind of phrase that I first learned in the tech industry. It describes a situation where a piece of software, where the user interprets what they're interacting with as a mistake, but it was actually designed in a way to appear dysfunctional. And it's actually operating as it's intended. So miscommunication in this process, lack of information in this process, it's not a bug, it's a feature. This is, this is a feature for people who value, they prioritize control over other things. And it's a feature of how certain people choose the real power. Some people in government see the public having access to accurate and timely information as a liability, or even a threat. But what this type of transparency really threatens is the status quo. Consider for a moment what we stand to gain by embracing a more open and transparent contracting process. In a recent study titled "The Cost of Secrecy: Economic Arguments for Transparency in Public Procurement," by a Yale University professor, the author states, "Open contracting aims to enhance the ability of businesses to understand and engage with the public procurement system in order to increase competition and level the playing field among potential contractors." Open contracting also helps to enhance the ability of the public, in particular watchdog groups and investigative journalists, to track public procurement expenditures, promoting efficiency and accountability by making it easier to uncover waste, mismanagement, and corruption. It levels the playing field, reducing the advantages of incumbency, as we're seeing with Jacobs. We all recognize that right now as a problem, or some of us have recognized it as a problem, something that I've been bringing up for a while. Anyway, so we're in the midst of a privatization process, our most valuable locally-controlled public asset, and we haven't even been provided with the hard data that supports this claim that this is somehow a good idea. The public wasn't included as a matter of course, but rather the public included themselves in the process, because they were deeply concerned about what the mayors were attempting to do here. Putting out messaging through the media wasn't a proactive component of this process. And so the press has been reacting to events as they unfold. The result in both cases has been confusion, anger, and a loss of public trust in our local government. And the short timeline for bidders, the breathtaking lack of information provided to bidders, I even had somebody email me claiming to be a representative of one of the companies that was considering bidding our process, and he, this person pointed to the index of addenda in our RFD, and pointed out that bidders were asking for pretty basic information from, I guess Mike Dervay, he was the point of contact, and some very basic information was not provided. And because they asked the questions through the formal process, the questions were recorded, and the answers were recorded too. And these answers were, information could not be provided in a lot of time, or whatever, but this was a response that was repeated at numerous times in the index of addenda. And so, you know, what we have here is a process that wasn't even open enough for certain companies that, you know, by other estimates shouldn't have been able to formulate a bid for us. So basically, you know, I wanna conclude by saying that I hear a lot of people lament about how government contracting operates at the federal level or at the state level, but what we're doing locally is no better. You know, if you complain about Albany, you complain about Washington, look at what we're doing locally. I share the concerns of many of the residents of Binghamton on that particular point, and I propose that instead of always pointing the finger elsewhere, we work to get our own house in order first. If the bidding process for this privatization RFP is a model for how contracts are generated inside a city hall, then we definitely have a long way to go. That's all. Thank you, Councilman.
How about Councilman Skorinji?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you all for coming tonight. I've said this many times, and I know my colleagues can occur, to those of you who do work at the plant, or for the city, we admire you very, very much, and we recognize how important each and every one of you are. And if you're not told that enough, you should be. I am disgusted at where we are. I spoke very passionately about this on Monday night. There seems to be a complete and utter disconnect at the plant and throughout this process. I believe that's the exact words that I used Monday night. I'll speak for myself. I've met with Jacobs and heard their side of things. The plant employees, though, some of you were with me that day, I met with you as well, singularly, to listen to where you are, and to the concerns that you have, the questions that you raise. Like some of my colleagues, I've taken tours, were with them at the plant as well. And the reality of it is, is that if you actually look at where we are this evening, it's actually a microcosm of the larger problem. Right? My colleague suggested, which I agreed to, that maybe we should amend the agenda, as an example, so we could take this opportunity to answer questions that were raised tonight by homeowners, by renters, by ratepayers. And how many of those questions were actually answered? Very few. The event. Right? We're using terms like privatization, as was correctly pointed out, not even in the denotative way it's supposed to. This is not a privatization. It's not, because if it was a privatization, the City of Binghamton as lead agency would no longer be lead agency once it was privatized. That's not a pro or a con statement about privatization, or a public-private partnership, or whatever it is. Fingers are being pointed, legitimate questions are being asked, and it's absolutely mind-blowing to me that statements are being made that there's no data to make claim X. Therefore, claim Y, which substantively is the opposition of claim X, is made. If you don't have data to make claim X, by definition, you don't have data to prove the opposing point. This discussion has literally become, I can't even believe I'm gonna say this, politicized. And who, who, who gets hurt in the end? The ratepayers. For reasons that I am not happy about, at this particular time, I cannot support in moving forward in this way, because where we are is not where we should be.
Which one we can.
And I will add to that, that I do think that Councilman Papastri does make a point that it is necessary to ensure that we are making decisions, number one, on the part of the people that we represent, that comes before everything, right? We are not leaders, we are public servants. And number two, to make sure that we have all of the data and all of the information, and part of that is seeing what comes back from the respective process, as it relates to the RFP. So I will always be open-minded, and more than anything, I will always be cognizant of the phone calls and the emails and the conversations that I've had with constituents that largely are out of concern and confusion about this entire process. So I'm not gonna sit here and finger-point, I'm not gonna sit here and say that we have data for thing X, but then we don't have it for thing Y, or whatever. I'm not going to do that. But, that being said, I do appreciate every one of you that have come down here. There are a zillion and seven things that you could be doing tonight, spouses, family members, evidently the remake of Beverly Hills 90210. Which should stay in the 90s, but that's a whole separate discussion. So thank you to all of you, and Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Skorinji. I can be very brief. We're in the middle of a process, right or wrong, we're in the middle of this process. So we have to wait until the process is completed before we can form an opinion. My eyes are wide open, my mind is wide open on this thing. I have no opinion either way on this thing. So we're waiting for the process to get completed, which is, it's close to being completed. Then we can discuss the proposal, and what's right about it, what's wrong about it, but we have, to me, we have to wait for the whole process to get completed before we can form an opinion. My colleagues, some form opinions, some haven't, but I can't sit here and form an opinion until I hear everything. So that's all I have to say about that. We'll conclude, the council members speaking right now, and we'll take a five-minute break before we move on. Thank you.